Those are probably the two main wild cards related to the expenditure budget. And that's pretty much that in a nutshell, any questions about the six-month period results?
Any questions from any board members?
You mentioned that you're expecting a small revenue loss for the year. Where would that be relative to budget, do you think?
It's about 1.5 million compared to budget. And mainly in tuition revenue. So then the next thing I think we're supposed to be going over is the, um, the budget? So this is our preliminary budget for 2023-24 year, and right now, um, I'm gonna go over the assumption, the, all the way to the right, the assumptions column. So, uh, at this point, we are, um, looking to budget for a hundred dollar per semester tuition increase, which will raise tuition from $2,300 to $2,400 per semester. We're also budgeting for an 8% enrollment decline as compared to last year. And this is actually a 2% decline as compared to this year's actual, or the 2022-23 actual. And this is one of the smallest declines in recent years. We've also built into the budget a 4% increase for the sponsor and a 4% increase for the state. We still really don't know what's happening with the state budget, although it looks like it might get settled this week. So then we will have more clarity as to where we stand with the state. And then overall, on the revenue side, if you want to scroll down a little bit, we're budgeting for a 4% increase in revenue. And that's about 61.8 million. In that 61.8 million, we have included, uh, 1.8 million for use of ba- uh, fund balance for prior expenses, which is related to the, um, uh, the settled contract that we hadn't included in the budget for 2022-23. On the expenditure side, we're total, uh, budgeting for total expenses to go up about 9.78% to 65.4 million. Um, you can see the largest increase in personnel is there at 13.6%. And this is because, mainly because for 2022-23, we were still negotiating the salary contracts for the CSA and Do Union. So we didn't include any potential increases due to those settlements. So for 2023-24, we don't, we're not only including the steps and merit increases for the 2023-24 year, but it also includes close to 1.9 million that span from 2021 through 2022-23. Benefits are going up about 3.7%, which might look a little bit small compared to the, um, salary increase. But that's because, um, we had savings and benefit lines not driven by salary that helped to offset other increases within benefits. And then contractual is budgeted to go up about 5.9%. Um, the main areas are utilities and maintenance contracts. So overall, we're proposing, here it shows 3.6 million use of fund balance. And then if you add in the 1.8 million that we showing on the revenue line, it's about a $5.4 million use of fund balance. Um, and then based on some planned, um, uses of purchasing of computers, potential salary savings, we'll be at about, that says 15.5 million, but when you factor in the 1.8 that we're showing on the revenue side, it's more about 13.3 million, which is still at about 20% of total expenses, which SUNY's guideline is that we'd be between 5 and 15% of, that the fund balance is between 5 and 15% of total expenses. Any questions?
Questions for anyone? Obviously, we will be seeing this again.
Right. This is just our preliminary. These numbers could potentially change, especially if, what, depending on what happens with the state budget.
They're giving any indication as to what might come out of the state budget?
No, I've asked, um, some people at SUNY and they just, community colleges are at the bottom of the barrel. So we get whatever is left, is what he told me.
But what we've, what we've lobbied for all year long is that, um, funding at, base funding at this year's level plus 4%. And within the budgets that we saw, whether it was the executive budget proposal or, uh, the one-house budgets, that, uh, that base funding plus 4% was in each of them. So, um, I'm feeling that, uh, that will happen.
Anything else?
One of the other things I'll add is that, um, with Steve's, uh, Steve, trustee Caswell's help, we have an opportunity to visit with the county legislature on May 4th. I'll be presenting with, uh, members of our leadership team, not so much on the budget, but on the kinds of investments that, uh, we've been making here at the college and what those investments are geared towards as well. From people to, you know, processes and, uh, physical assets and so forth. We'll talk about all of that to give legislators a sense of what's happening at the college and, and the state of affairs, uh, pretty much. Then in June, we'll go back and we'll talk about the proposed, uh, budget, what we're proposing. And in July, uh, we'll defend all of that, uh, for, um, the legislature. So, thank you, trustee Caswell.
I think that'll be helpful. I think the more information that the legislature has before they're voting on the budget, the better that will be. I know when I was there, we had the critique many times that there wasn't enough information given throughout the year.
Right. And I field questions from time to time and I'm always in communications with Dr. Jordan to, to help me with some of the answers. But I think this is just a good opportunity not to just be focused on the budget, but to tell all of the other things that we're doing. As you said, the investments that are needed, um, so we can have some separation. I'm sure the conversation will creep into budget, but, and that's okay. But at least, um, two separate, two separate meetings, I think it'll be productive.
Absolutely. Anything else for Donna or anything else on finance? Okay. We will now move on to liaison reports. The foundation.
All right. The foundation helped us send a group of the Model UN with funds from the Richard, is it Rotano? Model UN Fund. Did I pronounce it correctly? If anyone is interested in reading a note from Matthew Murray, I'm happy to send that to you. I have a copy of that note with me. I'm not going to read the entire thing. Same thing goes for the foundation, helped us send a group to the South Mountain and, and Tidham, um, with funds from the Richard Rotano Endowed Chair. If anyone's interested in reading that note from Professor Bowden, I'm happy to send that to you as well. The foundation supported this, a student so she could present her art history research at the 2023 Richard Maxi, Maxi undergraduate humanities symposium at Johns Hopkins University. The symposium provides hundreds of students across all fields of the humanities. A new scholarship was endowed in the foundation in the name of James and Nancy Fedorcheck to support a student who has a graduate, who's graduated from Beacon High School and is studying humanities and social sciences. Honors convocation will be held in May the 17th at 12 o'clock in the afternoon at the Grand View. If you have not RSVP, please do so to Emery Andrews. And the foundation golf tournament saved the date. We held on May the 22nd at the Linkshead Unionville. And more details can be found in the brochure in your folder.
Thank you very much. Um, I know Mr. Dupree normally does the association report. There has not been an association meeting though, since our last meeting, so we're good. Um, I wanted to make sure we had enough time for our next, uh, item, which is the next 10 master plan presented by Tony Alfieri. I think that you actually probably do not know most of the board members. So if you can just introduce yourself, um, the board of trustees has changed a lot since you've been here last.
Hi folks, my name's Tony Alfieri. I'm leading the, um, planning team. There's a team of about six different firms that are the good fortune of having the chance to work with y'all for the past five years. Volusia, lecture. It's really been our honor and privilege. But the quick report tonight is a quick recap of where we are in the process and how we expect to be able to, to wrap this all. Is it okay if I stand a little forward instead of putting the podium? So, sorry, this is.
Let's just make sure that our baby R. get sound and that he's okay.
Is this okay? Go back to the podium.
The sound is good, but it's a party movie better.
Oh, yeah, sure. How's this? Is this okay?
Yep.
Great. So what's on the screen is just a, a squid test. It's an overview of where we are and where we expect to be with the, with the, um, planning process. Just to simplify matters, um, we've broken it down. There are three key components. There's the space assessment, the quantity of space y'all need going forward. There's the assessment of the physical facilities, and then there's the drafting and the writing out of the Merckels, high level. Where we are now is we're in the middle of the, we're close to the end of the physical facilities assessment piece. At which point, um, sorry, just for the, for the 30,000 foot view. But the intent is then to, um, uh, put out a list for the campus of the, the complete set of deferred maintenance backlog, the obligations that the campus faces, and to get them priced, cost estimating, that will come back in about two weeks. And we're sort of, you know, building the plane as we fly it because we're, we're writing the report in tandem and then folding it all together with the idea of turning over the document to you all by the end of May. So for the May board meeting, we'll certainly be, you know, very far along and be able to, to deliver the reports that y'all can then go to the legislature, you know, with, you know, in, in June. At a high level, just to recap where we've been and where we are with the, um, with the space assessment piece. Um, what you're looking at on the screen are the statistics from 2017 and 2019. And as we all know, um, well before we started this master plan over the past decade, DCC's enrollment was progressively declining. And we talked about this, I think, at the last time we all convened, or convened with, with, with other members of the board, that the decline over the decade at Duchess was approximately 20, 22%. The decline at your peers, say, I mean, we can look at all of them, but specifically, um, Orange and Rockland was about 10 to 12%. And I won't get into the details here, but we talked about the differential, that DCC was declining at a more rapid pace than, than its, its peers. So what happened, as we all know, I mean, there's policy, there's programming, but more importantly, recently, there's pandemic. And that's what you're looking at on the screen, uh, fall '21 and fall '22. And what you're looking at is the drop off overall. But one thing that I want to signal, I'm just gonna step away for a second. The blue bars are tracking the quantity of in-person program delivered. So, uh, stuff that's delivered on the Pendel Road campus. The little orange piece at the top is other off-campus for example, you know, nursing, um, at a, at a hospital. Uh, the green piece, uh, represents Fishkill, uh, and the yellow represents online. And so you can see the dramatic pivot that happened. I mean, we, we all know this, but one thing that I specifically want to signal is the drop off in the, uh, blue bar and the, the reduced quantity of in-person instruction that takes place at DCC. Because it's that piece that, um, uh, factors in most importantly to how much space y'all need and what's needed for the master plan. And so to be one, where we thought we were in 2018 in terms of physical space need is obviously very different. So of equal importance, in fact, probably more important is what's the look ahead? And this was the subject of the meeting we had about three weeks ago. We don't just have to look at past, we have to look at the future. And what happened here between '21 and '22, we talked about pandemic policy and programming. This very much relates to policy. It has to do with the quantity of, of online instruction versus, um, in-person. And what you'll see is that more than 60% of the content is delivered not on the Pendel Road campus. More than 50% in fact delivered online. And I, and I signal this because, I mean, we look at numbers regionally. Um, this, um, represents an approximately 10% increase, '21, '22. Your peers are in the neighborhood, 86% increase. So the, so we talk about the difference between, say, 2010 and 2020, and '21 and '22. Duchess is an outlier regionally, um, that, that is peers. So then when we look at going forward, this trend, this differential is not something that one can arrest or turn around immediately. One doesn't snap back to a pre-pandemic condition, certainly, nor to the ratio. This, this is the, uh, modus operandi of, of Duchess today. And so when we think, when we projected two different alternatives, one is continuing on the current path of preponderance of online instruction, that, that enrollment decline would continue and would frankly intensify. Or there's another scenario where Duchess implements programming that tries to bring students back to campus, reestablishes the importance of the physical presence, the physical place, and begins to bring that blue bar up. In no instance would we expect that to rapidly grow at this point. This is where the, the, the baseline is, and so we're sort of steering around that quantity. With that, I just want to pause for a second to see if there's questions to what we've looked at so far. Okay. The, um, discussion that we had internally with, with the senior leadership was that the direction should be towards that option B, that we should be, um, working toward a model, uh, building a, a master plan around a model of about 1,300, 1,350 FTEs or full-time equivalents. And the differential there was about 950 FTEs. So that's the scale of the physical campus with which we're, you know, planning, around which we're planning. So translating it from FTEs or students to space. What we're looking at here, um, is the quantity of existing space on campus, over about 350,000 net assignable square feet, right, now, square feet. And what we're looking at specifically is the Pendel Road campus. So we're not looking at Fishkill in this model. We're doing a direct analog to the bars we saw before. When we look at the SUNY assessment, the SUNY metric for how much space, it's actually pretty granular. It looks at it according to athletics, for example, student support services, uh, classroom space, computer labs. But if we build it up, it's around 150,000, 155,000 net assignables based on the SUNY assessment. We can apply that to Duchess. You're a different institution. There are unique drivers. And perhaps most importantly, there's a need for Duchess to address the realities of, uh, pedagogy today. And so that's why we've developed an alternate assessment, which is, has a more generous allocation of space than the SUNY assessment. So if I can ask for a volunteer, someone when I'm remembering the number, because I didn't have, I did put it in the slides. 200,000, 200, Steve, can I picture on the spot? Thanks. 200,000 is the number that we want to be remembering. That's where we're steering the ship towards.
Yes.
And so fundamentally, a, a key piece of the master plan is how to, um, decant, distill, consolidate the 350,000 square feet of space that exists today into a 200,000 square foot container. Again, I just want to pause to see if there are questions or. So what we've also done, we talked about assessment of the physical facilities. This is the last piece that I'll, that I'll put on the screen. Our engineers have been out here. We've gone through all the buildings. We've, we've looked at them stem to stern and roughly clustered them, again, just for a squid test, into three categories. You know, in other campuses, we call it A, B, and C, um, you know, good, fair, and poor. But the great news is that Duchess has a quantity of space in down SSB in Washington that is in fair, good, even excellent condition. And if we add these numbers up, we get about 94,000, 95,000, almost 100,000 square feet of space. So, sorry, Steve, what was the number again?
200.
Right, great. So about half of the space that we need is, can be accommodated by good condition. And when I say good condition, if we were to put money into those buildings for the repairs that they will inevitably need, we're talking in the hundreds, mid-hundreds of thousands of dollars. I know that sounds like a lot, but in the scheme, we're gonna, it's, it's small. The next category of building we would, we would, we would put up there are sort of an intermediate range, uh, CPI Duchess and Drummond. So the north core of the campus, it's in fair and poor condition and it does require upgrades. But those upgrades are in the neighborhood of a single-digit millions of dollars. So for example, replacing the rooftop units on CPI or some of the upgrades to Duchess. And we can talk about this in greater detail, um, because you can do obviously a lot, you can do a little. But this is that intermediate range. And if we tally that up, that's about another, it's approaching 80,000. So 80,000, 100,000 before, about 180,000 compared to.
200.
Right. So, I mean, this is the conundrum, I think, that we're going to be up against. So that's. Then what we've done is this, the C-grade buildings, the, the, the third tier, that really require more soup to nuts, um, uh, gut renovation. Foremost among them Hudson Hall. And I won't get into the details, but I think we all know, um, the extent of, of, of the need there. That's where the rest of the space comes in. So Falcon, Hudson, and Teconic all require that stem to stern upgrade, very expensive, in the tens of millions, if not hundred million dollars. That, um, we'll be working with, I'll just say over the next couple of weeks to try to sort out what's the most appropriate volume fit to function for, for some of the space on campus. And then lastly, but wait, there's more, our campus-wide improvements. So there, we talked about the buildings, but there's the connective tissue. And it's not, I mean, the great news is that Duchess has taken good care of the campus. It's not vast, but there is some complement. And there's a trade-off because sometimes you do more in a building, but you do more at the campus-wide level or vice versa. So we're having some of those, this discussions now. I think one of the most important takeaways though, is that the aggregate deferred maintenance need for DCC is in excess of $300 million. And I don't put that out there to, to throw, you know, the, the, the mess on the table and then pack my bag and leave y'all to your next session. It's just that as we work through this with the master plan, we'll want to be making sure we're putting the resources, available resources in the, in the right buckets. To be frank, we also want to be listening to what the, for some guidance as to what the, um, the direction is from, from the board, obviously the county. Because how one steers towards the, sorry, I'm not a sports person, but someone I know has used the analogy, skate to the puck, where the puck is going. And we kind of want to understand where the puck is, um, regionally, so we can be thinking about how to best, um, map the, the reuse of these buildings. So with that, I'll, I'll close. I'll just sort of close on that side. See if there are questions or, or comments.
So I think my comment would be something that I have been saying since 2008, when Duchess first came before the legislature that I served in at that time. And that was, we need to move in the direction of online. And it was finally in the pandemic when we were forced to move online. But seeing this and seeing that the direction that the campus is giving, going more on, you know, in-person and not online, to me, that's really, beyond counterintuitive. You know, I think that there are so many students that enjoy online learning. And I think that there's a lot of students that we're missing by not having online classes. I will say, years ago, I had to take a class at SUNY Cayuga.
Yeah.
Because Duchess didn't offer what I wanted online. So I had to go give my money to Cayuga Community College. Why? Why are we not providing what students want? Why are we missing students?
That's a, that's a, can I, I know there was a comment, but can I answer that as a question?
Absolutely.
That's a great, um, a comment and question that SUNY is dealing with statewide. I think one thing that I would put on the table as food for thought. We're talking about obviously online versus in-person instruction, right? One of the challenges for any SUNY, but specifically community colleges, is the delivery of services in that online population in the context of online competitors. This blue piece, you're competing regionally, you're competing based on location, based on place. This piece, you're competing worldwide. Your competition is everyone. So who can deliver counseling? Who can deliver, um, student services? Who can deliver advising? And I just, I'm not, I'm not trying to be prescriptive. It's just that there is, I've said this to another, another campus. How is, how will you and your IT group effectively compete with Southern New Hampshire? To you, any, any of the other online pieces? If, if you can do it, that's great. I just, that's, and the, the big elephant in the room is SUNY Online. Because, sorry, because we're dealing with this, we're doing, we're for a community college in New York City that wants to deliver this in the context of CUNY's, you know, basically, how are you going to compete with the system? That's just something to, to think about internal.
I have another comment, which is the opposite of what you're saying. That we have an opportunity to create a community here, and community is one of the words in our new strategic plan. It's in our mission. It was, it was cited in Middle States as being what was so impressive about us. And as a teacher at SNHU, among other things, it's a cold place, the online world. It, it's, it, it's convenient. And I think that we should have it always, but I don't think that going into the future, it's a way to exclusively go. So I understand what's being said here about, um, not having access to certain classes and stuff. But that was a long time ago. And I think we have an opportunity to take, take the community in a different direction, back towards being together.
I, I also think there's the question of what we do with these, the physical buildings that we have and what the campus looks like in terms of if we are, you know, if we are switching all towards, what, what is our campus life? What is our community life? And I, I would also say, um, just looking at corporate America right now, there is a movement to get back into physical workspaces and the benefits of physical workspaces. So I think we have to account for that as well.
What are the recommendations with what to do with the space that we will not need?
That's a great question. At, at a high level, because we haven't gotten into, what, what, what our intent was going to be, was for the plan to actually carry two plans. To carry a plan that, or, or, what we're touring right now with is a, is a plan that basically condenses the campus into Hudson Hall and a plan that capitalizes on furniture working from the top down. Occupying those buildings and then divesting from the bottom up, with probably Falcon being the breakpoint. Because you, you, without a gym, what do you do? Without a, you know, that, that, so this may be, um, the, the breakpoint. The, Teconic is a great building. Teconic has potential utility if it's not for Duchess for other uses. It could be a phenomenal regional center for, for, um, technical education. It could be a phenomenal center for early childhood education. But that doesn't necessarily have to mean that it belongs in, in, in the way it does today to DCC. And, and I guess that's one of the questions that we'll be asking. If divested from the top or the bottom, which buildings represent greater utility for functions outside of Duchess? I mean, I'm sorry, I look at Hudson and I just think, oh my gosh, like accelerated, start with New York, I mean, all these different opportunities that could be there. Um, I don't necessarily think the same thing, but if I come from the top down, I look at SSB.
So from a practical matter, um, when the buildings are funded by SUNY and the county, how would it work if we were to say, you know, we're going to have another entity use this space now?
I'm sorry, but.
So let's say we were not going to keep one of those buildings and use it for another purpose. I mean, we would have to still be the owner of it. Otherwise, I mean, I don't, so we're still on the hook for maintaining all of these buildings.
Is it different than the residence? I mean, I'm just not asking, is it different than that because we have contracts with other entities in the residence halls?
The, yes. The residence halls is funded by the association. The buildings on campus are SUNY and the county.
So let me give you an example and, and forgive me, because I, and we've talked about this, so I, I hope I'm not, uh, let me, let me try to answer the question. Let's, let's take Teconic from, from, let's say Teconic were vacant. What are the, what are the, and we've talked about this in the board, so I, I don't think I'm saying anything that you haven't already heard. There's a real white space or empty space in the Hudson Valley for four-year public higher ed. There's New Paltz, which is pat, max to capacity. There's Purchase, which has a very specific use. But for example, nowhere in the Hudson Valley can you get a public NSW. And there's a tremendous need, and there's a huge need. So the idea that Teconic could be, um, I'm just throwing it like, not leased out, but to another, um, like with SUNY Canton, for example, or another four-year, and they take the space, they make it a center for engineering, maybe they teach civil engineering. So in one sense, it's on Duchess's books, but in another sense, it's getting income. All I'm saying is that it's not a, a space for, for DCC program.
Are there any models where that's taking place?
Yes, um, both in-state and out-of-state. So the, the prime example that I always use is Houston Community College, um, where as part, so, sorry, that, that, you get wrong, you, but it's a, it's a, it's a 28 campus system, so it's huge, but all of their engineering is delivered on a particular campus. And they actually have three different U, sorry, UT, U of H, and. And they actually have three different, U, sorry, UT, U of H, and UT Austin. UT Tyler, UT Austin, and all on campus, each with sub-led space. So when a student comes in to go to a community college, they can see mechanical engineering here, mechanical engineering there, mechanical engineering there, 100,000 price points, 60,000 price point, 20,000 price point. So it's one campus, but they host multiple entities, so the student can see a final destination. The same thing happens here at SUNY Purchase. If you go to Purchase, you'll see NYU Stern, you'll see Long Island University. And there's specifically cherry-picking programs, putting them on that campus in sub-led space so that the students have a diversity of options beyond what Purchase offers in terms of the performing, revision performance. I'm sorry, I mean, to be long-winded, is that?
That's fine. I'm just concerned about the cost. Anything else for Tommy?
Yeah, I certainly echo both of your sentiments. And I think there has to be a balance between the two, obviously. And it's going to be not only a decision that this board has to make, but I think the leadership needs to make pretty short-term. And I've been doing a lot of thinking about this and have quite a few questions that you answered most all of it. And I question, what happens when you put fish kill in the mix? What happens when you put family services into the mix of that space? What does that look like? And what can we be doing in the short-term, immediate-term, looking at those leases and maybe making some hard decisions?
Anyone else? Thank you very much. All right, it is 7:00 PM. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Joya, please read the roll.
Present.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Okay, thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Seeing that no one signed up for public comment, we will not have that portion of the agenda this evening. Moving on to consideration of minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes from the March 28th board meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second? Is there any corrections? Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Moving on to academic and student affairs. Ms. Cloud?
We last met Tuesday, April 11th. And in summary, we engaged in last-minute questions for the Middle States. Susan Rogers provided the committee with final updates on the Middle States team visit and allowed the committee to ask any last-minute questions. Regarding sabbaticals, President Jordan spoke to the committee about three sabbatical applications. He advised the committee that he's not recommending these applications at this time. Department chair appointments. President Jordan spoke to the committee about two new department chair appointments and one reappointment for the upcoming academic year. He spoke on new energy and ideas being brought to departments. The new department chairs are very eager and excited to get started. Commencement exercises. President Jordan told the committee about honors convocation on May 17th and the commencement ceremony on May 19th. He advised that more information will be forthcoming regarding speakers. And finally, the strategic plan update. President Jordan thanked the committee for their continued engagement throughout the process.
Thank you very much. Moving on to board policy, Mr. Guzman?
Board policy met on April 12th. And we have several, two new policies that I will be introducing and two reaffirmations during that meeting. We also spoke and had a small discussion regarding the new, potential new decision on affirmative action that would probably be affecting us in some way, shape, or form. And of course, Middle States' last-minute Q and A. But if I could move forward to.
Absolutely.
So bear with me. At this point, I bring resolution number 2023-20 for the following resolution and move its adoption. Where in keeping with good governance, the Board of Trustees Policy Committee reviews board and college administrative policies on a regular basis. And whereas based upon this review, the Policy Committee has determined that the procurement policy should be reaffirmed and remain in effect. Now therefore be it resolved that the, based upon the recommendations of the Policy Committee, the affirmation procurement policy is hereby reaffirmed as is and is to remain effect. And be further resolved that the board reconsider this policy again within five years or earlier, should it be determined revisions are needed prior to scheduled review date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say how impressed Middle States was with our policy procedure when we met with them. This was one of the questions that they asked of us. And he did a great job going through his committee and how often those policies are reviewed. So certainly seeing that firsthand this month.
Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Next resolution.
I offer resolution 2023-21 and offer the following resolution and move to its adoption. Whereas in keeping with good government practice, governance practices, the Board of Trustees Policy Committee reviews board and college administrative policies on a regular basis. And whereas based upon this review, the Policy Committee has determined that the emergency management policy should be reaffirmed and remain in effect now. And therefore be it resolved that based upon the recommendations of the Policy Committee, the aforementioned emergency management policy is hereby reaffirmed and is to remain in effect. Further being resolved that the board reconsider this policy again within five years or earlier, should it be determined revisions are needed prior to the scheduled review date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Next resolution.
I offer resolution number 2023-22. I'm going to skip that first part, which is the, in keeping with good governance. Whereas it is the responsibility of the Board of Trustees and administration to ensure the library plays an essential role in supporting the academic development of students of Duchess Community College and providing members of the college community with space dedicated to reading, research, studying, and other intellectual pursuits. It has been determined that a policy on the library collection development is needed. And whereas the Ad-Hoc Committee has reviewed the proposed policy on the library collection development and finds it to be appropriate to the needs of the college, now therefore be it resolved that based upon the recommendations of the Policy Review Committee and review of the Board of Trustees, the attached policy on the library collection development, which shall be made part of the official minutes of this meeting, is hereby approved. And be it further resolved that this policy shall be effective immediately. And be it further resolved that the board reconsider this policy again within five years or earlier, should it be determined revisions are needed prior to the scheduled review date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Final resolution.
Final resolution 2023-23. Whereas to comply with regulations and policy on granting degrees posthumously has been written. And whereas the College Professional Staff Organization, PSO, has reviewed said policy to ensure it meets all requirements. And whereas the Policy Committee finds said policy to be appropriate to the needs of the college, now therefore be it resolved that based upon the recommendations of the Policy Committee and by the Board of Trustees, the attached policy on granting of degrees posthumously, which shall be made part of the official minutes in this meeting, is hereby approved. And be it further resolved that this policy shall be effective immediately. And be it further resolved that the board reconsider this policy again within five years or earlier, should it be determined revisions are needed prior to the scheduled review date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, resolution carries. Moving on to finance and facilities, Mr. Caswell.
All right, thank you. We had a full agenda with all three of our committee members present. And the first item we had, we had Tony Alfieri and Scott Page provide the committee with an update on the completion schedule for our next 10, the college's academic and facilities master plan, and reviewed an assessment on the conditions of all the buildings on campus. And that was the same presentation that we saw here tonight in workshop. Adam Rathbun reviewed the revenue expense report through February 28th, again, as was reviewed in workshop, and the 2023-2024 proposed budget. Adam provided the committee with the proposed budget based on zero change and an approximate increase to state and local revenues. He reviewed revenue assumptions, student revenues, local share, state aid, offset revenue, total operating revenue and expenditures. An estimate of the amount of fund balance to be used was provided, as well as an estimate of the remaining funds in the fund balance. You know, again, as we heard in workshop. So, you know, obviously, the finance committee is given an opportunity to preview these things and ask some questions. And, you know, sometimes based on the information provided, you know, we have some comments that lead to slight changes before it comes to the full board. Couple of other things that were covered. Dr. Jordan also gave us the update on the sabbatical applications and the proposal for legal services. Dr. Jordan reviewed the legal services from Thomas, Drohan, Waxman, Pettigrew, and Mailey LLP. The hourly rate for attorneys increased by $10. And the hourly rate for paralegal increased by $10. So we thought that was a reasonable increase, given where we are in today's economy. And also, as I think Dr. Jordan alluded to earlier, he let us know that he will present to the Finance Committee of the Dutchess County Legislature at the legislature's May 4th meeting. And he plans to speak to them about some of the finance and facility items that were presented at the committee meeting while providing an update regarding enrollment and new programs. And finally, we in the Finance Committee were also given one last opportunity to ask any questions or anything remaining for the Middle States update. So that was our busy agenda for this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caswell. And you have one resolution?
And I do, yes. So there are some capital projects that need a resolution. So resolution number 2023-24. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas the campus site repairs and upgrades capital projects were approved as capital projects by the Board of Trustees of the State University of New York, the Board of Trustees of Duchess Community College, and the Duchess County Legislature. And whereas bid RFB DCC 042023 was duly advertised and requested for the 2023 site improvements Phase 1. And whereas bids were received as a result of the solicitation and were publicly opened and read aloud at 3:00 PM on April 6, 2023. And whereas vendors provided bid prices as shown on the tabulation sheet attached to this resolution. And whereas the low bid received meets the required specifications. And whereas the funds are available in campus site repairs and upgrades capital projects, now therefore be it resolved that the bid received for the 2023 site improvements Phase 1 base bid with alternative 2 for concrete sidewalk along parking lot A, in accordance with the specifications, be awarded to Contech Construction Technology, Inc. in the amount of $1,614,850.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, resolution carries. The Personnel Committee met on Thursday, April 13th. We discussed personnel matters. And Mr. Casella, I will ask you to read the two resolutions before.
Certainly. Proposing resolution 2023-25. And the eligibility requirements for early retirement is specified in Section 5.17 of the college's 2020-2025 contract. With Duchess United Educators and funds have to pay for the benefits earned are available in the personnel budget now that therefore be resolved that based on the recommendation of the president of the college, the early retirement of the below faculty members is hereby approved to be effective August 18, 2023. David Freeman, Assistant Professor, Architectural Technology. Mark Rollin, Professor of Math and Computer Science. That approval is granted to pay the appropriate benefits earned. And be it resolved that in recognition of their service to Duchess Community College, each will be granted with a meritorious status upon their retirement. And for the resolve that the Board of Trustees extends its sincere appreciation for their valuable contributions to the college's educational program during their tenure and wish the very best upon their retirement and future endeavors.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, resolution carries. Next resolution.
I offer resolution 2023-26 and move its adoption that based upon the recommendation of the president of the college, the retirement of the below faculty members is hereby approved effective August 18, 2023, beginning with Joseph Cosentino, Chair of the Department of Performing Visual and Communications, Professor of Theater and Speech. Jacqueline Goth McNish, Professor of English. Mary Ann Johnson, Assistant Professor of Math and Computer Science. Be it resolved that in recognition of their dedicated service to Duchess Community College, each will be granted a meritorious status upon their retirement. And be it resolved that the Board of Trustees extends its sincere appreciation to each of them for their valuable contributions to the college's educational program during their tenure and wishes them the very best in their retirement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution adopted. That ends the resolutions for this evening's board meeting. There is no report of the student trustee. Moving on to the report of the chair. Tomorrow, there will be the Second Annual Administrative and Staff Appreciation Breakfast that was started last year to recognize and celebrate the work of our fine employees. On April 21st and 22nd, the admissions office hosted two accepted students days. There were over 205 students from over, up to 550, excuse me, it attracted 205 students with over 550 individuals in attendance. As a result of the program, I am more likely to attend. The score was 4.7 out of a possible 5. So certainly made a very good impression on prospective students. Dress for Success was held earlier this month, which involved the collaboration of several different divisions, including the Workforce Development, Instruction and Learning, Enrollment and Student Success, and the Veterans Resource Center. This worldwide initiative helps to empower women to achieve economic independence by providing such things as professional attire. Our event assisted over 40 student participants. Counseling started two groups for group therapy. A group for those suffering from grief centered around understanding, processing, and honoring grief after a loss. And a second group called Keep Moving, which is a sexual assault survivors group focused on support, validation, and empowerment. Both groups are thriving and will be continued in the 23-24 academic year. On April 10th through April 14th, three DCC students participated in the Hudson River Group Model UN along with four Vassar students. The group has been working since early January. And one of our committees. and one of our committees received an Outstanding Position Paper Award, and our overall delegation was recognized with a distinguished delegation award. The Performing Arts Department successfully produced and presented the U.S. premiere of the award-winning new play Mustard. Over 40 students and faculty from across the PVAC Department collaborated in the production. DCC's speech and debate team traveled to the Nationals at Westchester University in late March, with one student making it to the elimination rounds as seventh overall seed. Three of our students ended the tournament ranking 10th, 11th, and 12th in the nation. The DCC Human Services Program Chair has been hard at work developing a comprehensive, three-tiered microcultural program for direct support professionals. In partnership with SUNY, the Office for People with Developmental Disabilities, and the National Alliance of Direct Support Professionals. DCC is one of 12 projects of this nature statewide and is the only local college participating south of Albany. The overarching work of this group is to provide statewide standards and direct support to professionals in the direct support workforce and to improve retention and advancement opportunities for direct support professionals. The Behavioral Science Department, in conjunction with the Off-Campus Centers, has developed a course which will start in the fall at the PFC for ESL and HSE students. The DCC Foundation will fund 10 program students who are not financially able to afford the tuition to take the class. On Wednesday, April 12th, DCC hosted a career fair where more than 100 employers from the Hudson Valley, including international companies like IBM and Amazon, came to campus to provide company information and the opportunity for attendees to apply for part-time, full-time, seasonal, and internship opportunities. Approximately 225 students and community members participated in the event. On Sunday, 4/16, DCC welcomed a team of eight peer evaluators for our three-day reaccreditation site visit from Middle States. This visit launched a well-orchestrated reception and dinner that allowed us to show off our amazing teaching spaces at the DCC Educational Hangar. Because really, how many people have ever had dinner in an airport hangar before? How to make a positive first impression. The campus was well-prepared and showed the team that with a variety of faculty, staff, and administrators throughout their visit. A successful report off was delivered on 4/19, which emphasized the enthusiasm and engagement that the team observed on the campus. A small reception for the campus community was held immediately following where President Jordan and Chairman Dupree expressed their thanks and appreciation for the campus's efforts. We would also like to thank, in particular, Susan, Scott, and Michael for all of their hard work on Middle States. It has been a long process, and your hard work certainly did not go unnoticed.
Thank you.
A collaborative effort across departments led the First Nursing Educator Job Fair on April 4. The Marketing Department successfully developed and executed a social media campaign that generated 97 inquiries and 25 resumes in response to open positions, while members of Human Resources, Instruction and Learning, Workforce Development, Physical Plant, and the Nursing Department all contributed to make the event a success. Follow-up is being conducted with promising candidates, and the overall event is being assessed in order to plan improvements for the future. The Dutchess County Youth Board awarded $20,000 for the DCC CAREs Surviving to Thriving Initiative through the DCC Foundation to promote the empowerment of self-sufficiency of 40 students who are homeless, housing insecure, lack material basics, and/or struggle with mental health issues. This program provides dropout prevention services through a student resource navigator, as well as emergency funds to address basic needs and the support of a mental health counselor who will provide workshops on the basic life skills, coping, and work readiness support. That is it that I have this month. Mr. President?
Yes.
We will move on to your report.
I don't know that I can follow that. But two things. First, I want to congratulate Scott Schnackenberg on his appointment officially as Vice President for Enrollment and Student Success here at DCC. Happened just in time for our Middle States visit. Congratulations, Scott, and thank you for all that you do. Anything you want to say publicly about your appointment?
No, I'm looking forward to it. I'd like to make Tony's slides not true.
Well, you have an opportunity to do just that.
If anyone can, it's you.
Definitely. The second thing is to follow up on something that Vice Chair Fleslem mentioned, which is, I want to take this opportunity to publicly thank, again, Scott and Susan and Michael and the Stern Committee that led our Middle States Self-Study, but also the entire DCC community for showing up and showing out as we hosted or ate peer evaluators here last week. It was an exceptional visit. The energy on campus was palpable. It was an opportunity for me to really be inspired by this community again, and again, and again. And so, I want to thank everyone for their participation and support during this process. But most of all, for the outcome that we are certain to have from this whole experience. So, thank you. And to the Board of Trustees for your leadership through that process. Trustee Garrity for being there with the working groups and so forth. So thank you all for your support and participation. That's it for my report.
Is there any other business to come before the Board this evening?
It's not truly business, but I wanted to make a quick comment. So this is, on a personal note, I have a young high school senior that attended this weekend's, like...
Accepted students.
I wanted to congratulate everyone that was a part of that. DCC as a whole, as a staff. This high school senior, these are words from her. She felt welcomed, and she's extremely excited to attend Duchess in the fall. Having a student bring that to my attention as a trustee, and again, she is close to me because her mom is an employee of mine. But just her coming without having to be asked, coming to me and saying wonderful things about Dutchess Community College and staff and how professional you were in receiving the group, it means the world. And I'm proud to be on this board, and I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. We hear numbers in these meetings. Like, I am more likely to attend DCC. Our score was 4.7 out of 5. But right there is a story of that in action. And that is wonderful to hear. And I love that that was brought to you and that you're bringing it to our wonderful staff.
Can I add just a couple, something silly? But on my way here tonight, I passed, because I know my neighborhood, I passed three kids coming home from DCC. And I'm on 80, you know, Route 82. And that's what happens. It's like, oh, I know you, oh, I know where you're coming from. I know what class you just did. So it's a small county in a lot of ways.
Absolutely. Graduation is quickly approaching.
Yes, May 19th.
On May 19th. Our next Board Meeting is May 23rd. I look forward to hopefully seeing all of you at both of those. Seeing no further business, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, get home safely.